Calling me in order, it began with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Commander Juan, we'll go ahead and get started with the second item, which is to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to the third item, which is the approval of the consent calendar, which is the minutes of the previous meeting and payment of bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John and the second by Doug. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls, same sign. You're gonna flip your coin.
Hopefully.
Item number four, consider approving Resolution 1915, adopting preliminary property tax levy.
Within your packet. This in there?
Yep.
I've got the draft for a conservative day. Proposed budget highlight, I put in there, which I'll go through briefly. There we go. So basically preliminary budget, you know, as you can see when you look at the color page, you know, we're coming in at 4.23% levy increase. That amounts to $45,000 and 220 or 274. Small cities assistance aid, we did get an additional 66, 698 this year. That goes to street. It's all, you know, all for street stuff. So increasing our overlay, crack seal, seal coat, street maintenance type items. Local government aid increase, 192,000. We have in the 2024 preliminary budget wages at a 4% increase. Our health insurance came back in at 4.4%, which was good. We were, I was very happy to see that. We were nervous our utilization is quite high, so. Elections, we will have elections in 2024 in March, August and November. So when you look at the budget, there's obviously increase in the 2024 budget because it's an election year. Public safety aid, they did a one-time allocation to the, to the city of Staples and other cities across the state of Minnesota. Ours, 129,000. There are some limits on what you can do with that, but that, you know, it's a one-time deal that that's available for use for public safety type items. Parks, basically we've got the Dower Lake Storm Shelter construction in '24. That's a 75-25 grant. Playground equipment up at Wilson Park. Permanent Improvement Fund. You know, we've talked about Permanent Improvement Fund before and we'll do it again tonight, but that has a lot of different stuff. But this year we have included paint and carpet, both here and at the police station. Some additional keyless entry, panic button at the PD, fire department radios and Leslie launchers for the police department. Airport tee hanger project. That's, you know, at that design stage still yet, but 81,500 is basically what that is. 90% of that is federal and then state and local make up that other 10. Community and center improvements, we've got, you know, a flat number in there, a million bucks. We won't know what the 2024 will be exactly until we go out for bids and get those back. We did have a increase in the tax capacity value in the city of Staples of 523, 896. And then new, a market value of new improvements for paid 24 at 5.7 million dollars. So good, good growth number. So turning to, I suppose my page number, I guess I'm gonna be wrong. Do we have another agenda? No, we'll still be on, okay. So page nine, which is the actual resolution. Basically breaks down where property tax levy is allocated. General fund, parks and rec, library, permanent improvement, road and bridge, community center. And then basically bond and interest, which is debt payments for previous projects that we've got. So turning to page 10. I think when we had our budget workshop, we walked through a lot of this stuff, so I won't spend a lot of time. But this, this is basically a summary of everything that's in here. A general fund and special fund expenditures broken out by fund. You see that that total expenditures between general and special fund is at 6.24 million dollars. Big increase obviously is the community center, you know, almost million dollar increase. And then some additional in the, in the streets. The certified LGA, we talked about the 192,000. You see what the total dollar amounts are. And then toward, at the end of the meeting, I'll talk a little bit about the coalition and their efforts for getting an LGA increase going into this year. And I'll just touch base, that's the yellow folder that you found. So as far as where the levy is allocated between general fund and special fund, you see the numbers there in the right-hand column. And then the bond and interest, total tax levy for the preliminary at 1,115,774. Again, 4.23. So to page 11, I think what I'll do is I'll just go to the summaries and then if there's questions on any specific fund or budget, we'll dive into that. Oh, okay. Can I have this?
Yes.
Thank you. So pa- page 12. City of Staples estimated tax levy analysis numbers with the 4.23. If you.
I did one with zero percent change and the other one with the 44.3% increase in valuation. So you can see how valuation changes the property tax numbers.
So this is the zero here?
Yeah, that's the zero. And then if you flip to the other page, it's the same property.
Okay. Can you say that louder so everybody can hear?
I was just talking to him. Okay, I put two tax, estimated tax levy analysis in there. One has a property with no valuation changes. So you can see how with the tax capacity changes, it would affect your property taxes. And if there's no change in tax levy or valuation, it would go down. But then with the market value increases that we're seeing, that's the next page over. You could see a slight increase then with the property taxes. So it depends on property values and how much they change and how much the property will get affected.
And that's, that's with what percent increase in value, the second one?
That's 43.
43%, okay. So you can see additional $76 with 43% market value increase.
So we're just looking at pages 12 and 13.
12 and 13.
Go back and forth comparing one, one way and the other way.
Yeah. So if, if the market value didn't go up with, with the 4.23% increase, you'd actually see a decrease of $204 annually. This kind of shows the impact that market value changes have on, what ultimately a property owner pays for taxes. Want that one back or you want mine? Okay, so jumping to page 14. You know, basically the different sections of the general fund. Looking at revenue, 1.578 in administrative, 81.2 in planning zoning election, 34.5 city hall, 286 in police, 156 in fire, 700 in animal boarding and then 113,000 in, in the airport. Turning to page 15, you see the, the color coding again where that differentiates between the real estate taxes and the local government aid. You know, dollars are fungible, you know, so we just make some determination as far as what, you know, what amount of LGA versus tax levy goes into various funds. But you can see where we have it allocated in the proposed preliminary budget. And you can go through, next page, police, fire, airport in there. The following page is a pie chart that most of you are familiar with, but just basically looks at general fund, summary of expenditures in a graphic format. Obviously you can see, you know, public safety, huge component of general fund expenditures, followed by admin, planning and zoning, airport and city hall. Going to expenditures. Administrative at 371. Election, you can see we're, you know, 12,250 above last year's non-election year for 2024. Legal is up a bit, planning and zoning, you know, big component of that obviously is building permits. We heard Scott when he was here talking about that. So, you know, obviously in September of '23, it's hard to predict the revenue of building permits, but if there's no revenue, there's no expense, so we make a couple of guesses. City Hall up just a little bit. Police up about 185. Fire, 15 or so. See the other ones, getting airport, we've got ongoing operating costs at the airport. So within the administrative budget, you know, we've got the salary infringement type items are about the top half. Get into your supplies, professional fees. You know, are kind of the big line items, breakdown of those. A lot of the professional fees on the bottom part of that, various memberships, the cost of audit, some legal fees, HR type stuff. Page 20, election, legal, planning and zoning. We've got, you know, attorney, legal services on the agenda for later tonight. That's where that comes out of. City Hall budget, up a little bit, repair and maintenance of building being, you know, the biggest area of increase. Building, it's hard to believe is already 13, going on 14 years old, so. We're doing pretty good on it, but stuff is starting to break, so. Police Department budget. You know, two-thirds of that are, are staff related. Chief and officer. Work comp has gotten to be a huge cost within the police department budget. And I think a lot of that has to do with, with some of the, you know, utilization of work comp and post-traumatic stress and, you know, things of that nature. So the insurance has really gone up on that. Gas and oil, obviously bumped that up a bit again. And, you know, as you scroll down, not a ton of changes. We've got $111,000 transfer out is the part of that public safety aid of the 129 or so that we got. We use some of that allocated, some of that within the PD budget and the rest is basically in reserve, transferred out into reserve. Capital outlay within police, squad radar and squad computer. Fire department, you know, pretty similar to what we've had in the past. We did increase the travel, training and meeting expense. When you have new firefighters, you have more training expense and they tend to show up at every meeting. So made an adjustment in that line item to get it more in line with, with reality now as opposed to what it was, what it was five years ago. The capital replacement funding, basically standby fees from the county, you know, go towards capital equipment. We've talked before, SCBA's trucks, you know, gear, radios, that type of thing. We've established reserve replacement funds that we allocate dollars towards so that in the future, when we do need to replace those, there's money sitting there to do it, so. Relief Association over on the bottom right-hand side. We do get state aid money to go towards the Relief Association pension stuff and then also do a contribution to that fund in addition to that. Total of that is 46,000. Community concern for youth, that's something that, you know, they come to the council or send a letter every year for approval, which we did approve that dollar amount earlier this year. Civil defense, cyber and maintenance. Animal control, pick up dogs and cats, gotta pay the bet. The street lighting piece of that, we've got lights that are in Todd Wadena Electric Service territory as well as lights that are in city of Staples. So there's a breakdown on, on what the cost is related to that. And then historical society, the $2,000 that we approved down there. Ignore the animal control, don't make them feel bad. Page 25, airport. Let's see what the annual operating budget is for the airport. Aviation fuel again is one of those that, you know, we just kind of take, take a stab at. We generally are 15 to 20% markup, so. Other than filling it towards the end of the year when the sales take place the following year, works out pretty well for us. One, one item that I do have in here under fuel sales expense, we need to change out that point of sale system in, in the AD building that processes all the payments and stuff. That's at end of life and not supported anymore, so hope it holds until January. So that's general fund. Then we jump into special fund. And, you know, our special fund consists of parks and rec, library, permanent improvement fund, street, community development, airport capital, you know, the tee hanger project. We have a line item for tarring and assessed. You know, so if we do some paving somewhere and assess that, that's where that, that comes from. Community center and then tax increment districts that we've got out there. And then also the debt service. So debt service and, you know, basically what we, the city levy for, you know, for bond and interest and there's also special assessments that are flowing into those funds to make the, the payments. So you'll see that, that debt service number there and the debt service levy are necessarily going to match up. That's why. So within, within the special funds, you see the breakout and again, the LGA and tax levy allocation that you have there. Then there's all sorts of other revenue, just like there is in the general fund. You know, some of it consistent and predictable, other stuff less so. But, you know, within park and rec, for example, the, you know, camping permits and seasonal camping, that's been really good out there at, at Dower this year. And I think going to that campsite reservation software has been very good because people are able to book it and they know that they've got a campsite instead of showing up and taking a chance.
That transition is kind of taking place now because I know at first there was people maybe showing up expecting the old ways, that transitioned into?
Yeah, I think there was maybe a couple this year where we had, where we had an issue. I think I, I think I remember hearing that, like the police had to go out there and encourage somebody to, somebody to move. But everybody will get the hang of it sooner or later. Permanent Improvement Fund revenues, you see that small cities assistance aid, which is a new line item in there. We have had pots, you know, small snippets of that before. I think we had 21,000 one year and then we had 62 back in '21 and then nothing the following two years. So the, this past year, the legislature actually allocated funds to it, then it's ongoing. So, or at least ongoing until they stop doing it, so. Street fund, community development fund. Industrial building is full, you know, it's a great thing. Generates revenue for EDA. You see the airport capital on the following page. Community center, you know, the revenue piece, you know, swimming lessons, memberships, pool utilization. And then the, the debt service line item down there. You see that 527, 760 that ties back to that, back to that first page. And then the assessment line item, you know, anticipate 58,000 of assessments, special assessments being paid, brought in. So page 29, expenditure summary. Basically has the tally of the following several pages that we have on there, but the summary is a great place to compare year to year and, and what's been happening in there. Again, draw your attention to community center was a big one. On the increase side, within community development, the Blandon grant, you know, was this year. So there's 100,000 that's not there for next year. Goes up and down. So, you know, within park and rec, again, you know, top third of the budget is going to deal primarily with, with employee costs, staffing costs. Supplies, repair, maintenance of equipment and buildings. Right on down the line, you see the little bit of an increase in that. Capital outlay, Wilson Park, storm shelter out at Dower, pavilion roof out at Dower. And then we talked at the budget workshop just about starting to put some dollars away for picnic tables, garbage cans on an annual basis. Permanent Improvement Fund. As I've said before, this has a lot of different stuff in it, so we'll kind of go through it. The capital outpiece, outlay piece kind of summarizes it down on the bottom, but it breaks, breaks it out up on top, 150 for the street tarring, 10 grand for storm sewer, repair and maintenance curb and gutter, you know, basically concrete type stuff. 30 for seal coat, crack seal. 14 more replacement, computers, security cameras at the 40,000. Fire equipment, 60. And you can, you know, see down on the, on the lower level, that's basically turnout here and mobile radios, the 40 and the 20. It carries up into that, into that line item. 11 for police equipment, 6,000, city cleanup, ditch assessment. We don't know what, what that'll be till we get the, you know, statements, if we get one. The building maintenance, 55, again, that's the police department and, and city hall for what we have budgeted. And, you know, reforestation. We've got, we've got stuff in there and then also in, in parks, you know, for reforestation. So up a couple thousand dollars from where it was last year in Permanent Improvement Fund. Airport capital, again, tee hanger, engineering stuff. Within the street department, health, life insurance and, and long-term disability. Again, uncertainty. I don't know if I can mention Bruce. In anticipation of a retirement of, of one of the employees, we don't know what the circumstances of any new hire will be from a insurance standpoint. So we're assuming the higher cost of the two. And then as you get down, you see we do have a severance expense line item added in there. So there's, you know, that basically accounts for the majority of the increase within the street department. Capital outlay, street shop generator, and that basically is taking the 12th Street lift station generator. That lift station is now powered by the wastewater treatment plant generator. So we want to take that generator from the 12th Street lift, bring it to the street shop, get it set up over there. So in the case of power outage, we can open the doors and have the lights on. And then, and then the other $10,000 item is for brine system for one of the plow trucks. Community Development Fund. See the breakout there, again, employee cost up on the top. Repair and maintenance, the lodging tax is something that flows through, through the EDA and, and then that via contract that the city has with LEAP, you know, goes to the tourism marketing. And, you know, I mentioned the Blandon grant not being there, so the 44, 36 line item is a lot lower. And the TIF payments, I believe one dropped off, Staples Square?
We have to do that.
Decertify it, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, you know, that TIF district will be over, decertified, so the dollar amount's lower there. The ERPA stuff on page 34. You know, basically those dollars, we've been able to kind of allocate out over a period of years. We've got 18 going towards parks, 27 to permanent improvement and 20 towards street, totally 65. Community center expense, again, the top third is largely staffing at the community center. The usual building supply or office supply, repair and maintenance items, insurance. Get down to the capital outlay, rehab work, that's, you know, the big ticket item that we anticipate for 2024 with the sales tax revenue. Then page 36, and this is, I think, good information for the council to keep in mind with some of the projects that we have coming up in, in hopefully '24 and '25 is, you know, basically a, a summary of our current, current debt and what those, what those projects were. So the 98 FHA bond for the cell site improvements continues to, we continue to make payments on that. That's going to be coming to an end in February of '28. What was that? Was that a 30? It must have been a 40-year, 30-year? Long time, 98 to 28, so. Liquid health system, water and sewer stuff, that'll come mature in '27. Liquid Health System, water and sewer stuff, that'll come mature in twenty-seven, as well as Valley View in twenty-seven, the Highway Ten project, that'll be over in twenty-eight. And then there's, you know, the City Hall Library stuff goes out for years and the turnback for another eight years, so. So there's, you know, there's some debt going forward, but we do have stuff coming off in the near term, too, so. Historically, we've tried to, tried to keep that debt service levy relatively flat so that we don't have big dips and spikes in the debt service levy. And then the next section is basically what interest is on those bonds. Any questions on that?
Gerald, I have a question on page thirty, where they have Director for Park and Rec, forty percent. What is?
I'm getting there. Oh, basically, Parks and Rec Director is Community Center and Parks and Rec, so sixty percent Community Center, forty percent Park and Rec, split. That's a rough estimate of time spent in the two different departments. So that, you know, that basically is the preliminary budget and tax levy. You know, in December, we'll also bring, you know, the, the water, sewer, and light budget, which are non-levy type of items, to the council. And, you know, we've had, in, in recent years, you know, going back to nineteen ninety-nine, we've had, as far as final levies, we've had a zero, a one point nine, a zero, a one point zero eight, and another zero as far as final tax levy. And that, you know, reflects the, you know, the actual dollar amount collected by the city from property taxes. So we've been, you know, very conservative on that tax levy. I want you to remember that four point two-three is preliminary, it can go down, but can't go up from that four point two-three. The big unknown that we have, you know, that hopefully will have, have resolved between now and December, is basically where we're at with, with employee wages. We're in the process of negotiating with LELS, IBW, and AFSCME. So just trying to, trying to keep a little bit of buffer here to work with so we don't end up in a bind. I can also tell you that some of our surrounding communities' preliminary levies, Brainerd came in at ten point five, Baxter, seven point one, Nisswa, nineteen point one, Wilbers at fifteen, Alec at ten point six, Cross Lake, five point four, Bemidji, ten point three, Mora, twenty-two point one, Northfield and Detroit Lakes both at about eleven point two, and Becker County at five point nine six.
We had the thirty percent one.
There was a thirty-three percent in Park Rapids.
Ouch.
They say it will come down, but, so, just to put things into, into some kind of perspective.
Do I need to entertain a motion for adoption of that? So moved? Motion by Mary?
Second.
Second by John. Is there any discussion?
I have one question about the Community Center, and that, you know, the million dollars that's added into the budget there. Do we have any indication other than, is that once a year that tax that we get, what we collected in the, in the tax, you know, that, is that once a year that we find out that number, or how do we?
Well, we, we get monthly, basically monthly, a monthly report and also a payment, and then a, what's the term that they use, but?
They use an estimate and then a final.
Yeah, so they, they, they give us, and I, I can't remember if it's fifteen thousand dollars, and then clean it up, do a cleanup based on actual. But what we don't know yet at this point is what the annual dollar amount will be. And I think a little bit of that is obviously going to be dependent on the economy, you know, it's going to be dependent on, you know, on local spending, you know, all of those types of things. So, so we're, we're, we anticipated when we, when we requested the legislature to approve it and then went out for the referendum, you know, we were thinking about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in sales tax revenue flowing to the city from that. Based on what we've seen so far, and again, it's been a short, relatively short window, you know, just started in April, first payment in May, sometime in May, it appears that it's a little bit going to be, going to exceed that, but we're not going to do anything crazy until we have a solid idea of what.
It looks like it will exceed.
Excuse me?
It will exceed that estimation?
Yeah. But again, you know, we don't know what the, you know, what the economy is going to do, what people's spending is going to do, you know, so we're mindful of that.
Yeah, I just see it was in, you know, it's in there as a million dollars, but I didn't know if we're going to start spending right away or if we're just going to, kind of?
The, what, what I would say is that the boiler would be one of the first priority items, and that, you know, I think we're talking around a hundred and fifty thousand or so on that, if we get one. And then the drain system within the building, you know, before we put new flooring down in the locker rooms, we want to make sure that we're able to clean and line that old cast iron drain that runs under there. So we had, we had, oh, golly, Overs, Overson, I won't get their business name right, but Overson does a lining process. They came up and, or actually, we sent them a video, they looked at it, looked at the schematics, recommended Dusty's something or other company that they worked with to come up and camera it. And they do more interior lining in old hospitals and schools and that type of thing. They came up, they couldn't get their camera down some of the drain lines. So we have to get that augured out in order to get cleaned out enough to be able to get their camera down. Which would explain why we have floor drains that back up with some regularity over there, so.
Ew.
So, and that would be to do the lining process possibly, or?
If they, yeah, if they can get them cleaned, and, you know, the, the camera, the video that I saw from Bryant Reese, and he's got a smaller camera that he got snaked down in there, you know, it's, it's like mineral deposit buildup on the, on the inside of the cast iron. So they, they think that they can go in there and clean that off using a variety of tools to get it back out to the actual, you know, normal inside diameter, and then go in and do that lining on it. So, and that, the alternative is saw cutting all the concrete basically from the west end of the women's locker room, all the way through the men's locker room, removing the pool filter equipment in the, in the filter room because it dives down underneath the pit, across the hallway, into the offices, and then you hang it right and go south to Fourth Avenue. So we don't want to do that if we can avoid it. So.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
Thank you for all your hard work on developing this.
Thank you. It, it, you know, it's, it's an interesting process every year, you know, and I, I've shared with the council before, the, you know, the CIP is, is where a lot of it starts, but, you know, as far as the projects go. But the, we start putting this together back at, back in early July, and as we move towards this time of year, and I've talked several times even tonight about the things that we don't know yet, but, you know, more and more pieces kind of fall into place, you know, whether it's insurance or, you know, you get engineering reports back or decide to put stuff off another year or whatever. So I think, I think poor Tara, and then her spreadsheet more times than she has hairs on her head tweaking. So, but, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
All right, we'll move on to item number five. We'll consider a pending proposed two thousand twenty-four preliminary city budget and set truth and taxation hearing date for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, sounds good, we'll set that for December twelfth. Move on to item number six, consider request by Sacred Heart Catholic Church to conduct the bingo November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
On the page thirty-seven in your packet is a application for bingo at Sacred Heart for November nineteenth.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Blake, second by Doug. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. On to item number seven, consider scheduling public hearing on October tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P.M. for body camera policy review.
So in, in your packet is a memo, memo from Chief Burkholz, and I'll kind of turn this over to her as far as what the process is, but as you know, we are entering the body cam era of the Staples Police Department, and along with that, there's some things that we have to do before we get going on that.
Yeah, so the Staples requirements on when you adopt this program, and part of it is to allow public input on our policy. And in addition to that, we applied and received a grant to pay for half of our body cameras, and one of the requirements for obtaining the grant funding is to hold the public hearing in case people have input on anything different they want to see in our policy or anything like that, so.
A copy of the proposed policy is here. I appreciate that, it's less than three pages.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mary, second.
Job to make motions, I guess.
Wait, no, a second?
Blake, Blake, second.
I didn't say, okay.
I didn't hear that.
Motion by Mary, second by Blake. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, set a public hearing for October tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P.M. Where's that going to be at? Here.
Yeah, we'll do it right, yeah, council meeting.
Council meeting.
Yeah.
Item number eight, consider approval of Resolution nineteen sixteen, authorizing State of Minnesota State Airports Fund Grant Agreement Number one zero five four eight seven four.
So a copy of Resolution nineteen sixteen is in your packet. This may seem familiar, we, a month ago, did the federal part of the funding for the engineering phase of the T-Hanger project. This one is the state piece of it for a whopping four thousand one hundred and ten dollars. I would recommend approval.
I make a motion for Resolution nineteen sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to number nine, consider termination of the Wadena Hubbard County Emergency Response Unit Joint Powers Agreement.
So in, in your packet is with the Staples letterhead, is a notice to terminate joint powers agreement. And I'll, I'll let the chief kind of touch on this a little bit more, but basically, we're, we're moving away from a joint powers agreement into a memorandum of understanding. There's a time period for the joint powers agreement to be fully terminated, and then we'll bring that MOU back, if I summarize that accurately.
Yes, it's kind of a formality to, it's for liability insurance reasons. We're just trying to clean up the language, and in two thousand and five, I believe, we signed this joint powers with Wadena and Hubbard County agencies. We've since added, added Becker County to our emergency response team. So in part of doing that, we are going to draft a memorandum of understanding or mutual aid agreement in place of the joint powers so that it's cleaner with our insurance and make sure everybody's covered appropriately.
I'll make a motion for the, to, for the approval of the termination of the Wadena Hubbard County Emergency Response Unit Joint Powers Agreement.
Second. Motion by John, second by Blake. Now, any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, consider approval of the twenty twenty-four Legal Services Contract with Quinn Levin and Hughes P.A.
So in your, in your packet, we've got legal services agreement with, with both of, both for both the Todd and Wadena County side. The Quinn Levin Hughes is, you know, basically Joe Kruger and others from that firm. It scribbled on my other one here because I would anticipate a question of, did it go up, did it go down? So last year, the Quinn Levin Hughes one was at thirty-six four, and proposed to be at thirty-eight, five fifty. The hourly rate went up ten bucks an hour, so. Things continue to get more expensive.
We usually do those in January, don't we?
Uh, no, we us, we usually will do them at the end of November-ish. But, you know, not knowing if we'll have a meeting, the second meeting in December, and that's our, our levy one, public hearing, so. We got both of them in, we figured we'd put it on the agenda, like we've done with Both of them will be happy to present to the council, too. I know that, Mary, I know you like to have them to come, but it was out east tonight, so.
Or they could even zoom in and do it rather than having to come in person.
Yeah.
And we'd only be charged for the, not for the mileage and the time. I'd just like to hear, you know, what's changed, what focus, you know?
Or they could even zoom in and do it rather than having to come in person.
Yeah.
And we'd only be charged for the, not for the mileage and the time. I'd just like to hear, you know, what's changed, what focus, you know? Because it used to be a lot of bad checks that they spent a lot of time on and I'll bet there's not much of that anymore.
Very few of us left that write checks. Or places that'll take them for that matter. But no, and I, I'll, I will have them, uh, come to a future meeting. Like I say, Joe was not available and, um, that's the big one we're dealing with here, so.
Are we gone next meeting, so?
Maybe the second meeting in October.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion.
I'll move the legal services contracts. Do we have to do them individually or can we do them? Okay. For Quinn Levin and Hughes P A. As presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by John, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Move on to consider approval of twenty twenty-four legal services contract for Kyra Lab.
A copy of Kyra's, uh, contract is in your packet and I believe it is identical to last year and the year before.
Yeah, she's had that same amount for several years.
I'd recommend approval of that.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mary, second by Blake, any discussion? Hearing now all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That brings us to item number twelve, which is committee reports, and we have Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
I'll do it unless one of you want to.
That's okay.
Lacey was not able to be here, I didn't realize the font was going to be so small, I have to take that back. I do have an eye appointment in the morning. Um, Park and Rec met on, uh, September twelfth. Um, we brought along kind of the engineer's estimate broken down into low, medium, high priority for improvements at the community center, uh, in a larger font so that, uh, all of the members could read it. Um, and talk about Dusty's Drain Cleaning, which we talked about here, uh, tonight a little bit. And, um, you know, definitely want to explore that as an option. Uh, we're working to get new, uh, signage on the community center. Uh, Leon Dolvane at Central Lakes College is working on that. Um, doing a, a trial on a three dollar, uh, day fee, uh, for people under eighteen just to find out if that's a deterrent for, um, uh, kids to come in and, uh, and utilize the facility. Have had a couple of new ones, but we'll continue to promote that. Uh, we did pass out, uh, free swim passes at the parade, uh, and that, uh, seems like that's been fairly successful getting people in the building. Um, again, closing out the planning grant of the, uh, storm shelter piece out there, uh, and then put the app in for the, uh, construction. Although I learned from, uh, our Homeland Security Emergency Management rep that basically any new project funding is on hold until the federal government, uh, gets their budget processed done and allocates more money to FEMA because apparently they are using it for things like hurricanes. So can't argue with them, I guess. The, um, C T C or, or, sorry, West Central Telephone did get the wifi, um, installed for the seasonal campsites out there. And, uh, little hiccup that they changed the password so nobody could get access to it. So she had to track them down and figure out what that was. Um, we mod- did modify the, the twenty-four seasonal agreement the council approved. One tweak that we're gonna, uh, do in that is if people are going to leave their awning out, even if they just run to town, there needs to be marker stakes, um, at the end of those tie downs. We hooked on with lawnmower and tore the awning right off the side of the camper. So we're gonna put that in the contract. Um, talked a little bit about the tunnels at Lincoln Park, uh, looked at a few different options for, uh, different apparatus. Uh, kind of ended up talking about swing sets being put back there. We still have the old ones which we're exploring and we'll continue to work with Park and Rec to come up with recommendations on that. The idea of some kind, type of camera, uh, near the fishing pier, uh, was talked about some more. Um, West Central, I think we shared at a previous meeting, um, a partnership of West Central Telephone and Todd Wadena Electric to put a live feed type camera up that would show the, the north end of the lake and the pier from a distance. And, uh, yeah, was like that. And, um, um, but then the, you know, the whole idea of getting something that would provide some security coverage, because there's been some stuff that's disappeared from people that are out there. So, um, nothing concrete on that yet, we'll find out what the, what the different options might be. Um, continued to have some discussion on, uh, the boulevard tree stuff in the University of Minnesota and the advice that we're getting from them. Um, reported that, uh, Scott and Lacey and, uh, Blake and I met and, you know, talked about, uh, some different ideas as far as soil replacement, things of that nature. Do we plant, don't we plant, if we don't, what do we do, um, down there? So, um, not quite at the point where we're ready to make a final decision or recommendation on that. Parks will be closing October first, seasonals have until the eighth, um, to, um, either be out or have a waiver signed and, but, you know, basically on the eighth even for seasonals, the parks will be shut down, um, and winterized. Uh, talked a little bit about volleyball league, uh, we're gonna do this year a shorter, uh, season than we normally do. Um, it's our understanding that the, um, um, the twenty-weekish type season, um, that we have been doing is a lot longer than normal, um, and our fees are lower. But we're, we are going to do the eight to ten week, uh, with tournaments to follow for volleyball. So, um, meeting was adjourned at six eleven, so. Happy to try to answer any questions.
There are no questions, we'll move on to open forum. Now we'll move on to city administrator report.
Um, yeah, just a few items here. Uh, we did meet with Amtrak, I think was our last meeting, um, when the Tom Keir and Sally Gordon with the Historical Society were up here. Um, I believe it was that following day or a couple of days after that, um, the, um, government relations rep from Amtrak, um, came in, you know, was scheduled to meet with me and Tom and Sally were able to come to that meeting, so it was good. Uh, Tom has had inter- interaction with this guy before, but we were able to communicate to him, um, the concerns that, um, that we have as far as the Amtrak lease rate and some of the provisions related to that. And it sounded like he was going to try to get the discussion started on the Amtrak, uh, side of the world, so. Haven't seen anything yet, but I have his card on my desk, so I'm gonna fire him an email here one of these days and see if we can, you know, facilitate a better arrangement for the Historical Society down there. Uh, we else, we hosted a open house for the water and sewer project, um, or I should say the underground improvement and street projects for the, for twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, there were how many interested parties there, Mary Jo?
Yeah, a bunch, yeah.
Seven maybe, six, seven, uh, but, uh, it's early in, in that, in that whole process. And, uh, um, you know, one property owner in particular has a service line concern and, you know, wanted to know about timing and what, you know, whether he should proceed or not. So there was, there was value to it and.
Yeah, they did a good job explaining so that the people were satisfied that, you know, it's just, it's not ready, it's not ready.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, there's a, a, a city administrator group from the west that I've been participating with via, uh, via Zoom, uh, over the last couple of months. Um, Detroit Lakes, Purim, Holly, you know, Alec, Park Rapids, you know, kind of a different group than our normal region five group. And, uh, it's been good, um, you know, a lot of communities and, and people that, uh, don't interact with a whole lot, but, uh, a lot of, a lot of good conversation with them, so I'm gonna try to keep participating in that. Uh, had our second round of negotiations with L E L S and another one scheduled. Got our second with I B W, um, this Friday. And, um, keep plugging away, I think F S M E, the first date we could come up with, I think, is towards the end of October, so.
Roy responded morning, but it was after.
Yeah, because one of the two worked for you, neither of the two worked for you and so. Anyway, we're, we're plugging away on it, we'll, we'll get it. Um, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, your yellow folder that you have, and Mark, I'll give you this one, I only have seven, but, um, uh, this, this is kind of in place of our annual city visit from Elizabeth Waifel with the Coalition. Uh, she apparently has a broken foot. Um, and one of her, um, one of the other staff at, at the Coalition happened to drop these off. He was up doing Wadena. And so Karen and I had that for a while, but you can kind of read through to customize it a little bit for, um, the city's staples, but, you know, there, there are a few things and I think most of you probably get the Coalition newsletter, you know, via email. Um, you know, their, their big focus area, uh, for years has been local government aid. And they are strong advocates for, you know, increased funding for L G A, formula changes for L G A, uh, do a lot, a lot of lobbying on that. And, and then also, uh, business development, public infrastructure, uh, funding. And, uh, a lot of the environmental type stuff that cities end up having to deal with, um, related to wastewater discharge, different things of that nature, so. Um, uh, organization that we've been a member of for many years and maybe do a lot of good work on behalf of Greater Minnesota City, so.
We had some successes this last session, not as funny as they'd like. It told the mostly, that joke.
Yeah, and that's, and that is. Yep.
Didn't even realize that Greater Minnesota doesn't quite have all the opportunities for revenue.
No, and it, when it comes to L G A, you know, there's a fine line there, you know, because you want, the metro cities have access to L G A because if they don't get any L G A, their, their legislators aren't going to support L G A. Um, you know, so Minneapolis and St. Paul both get, you know, big bucks, um, through local government aid. But it's all based on formula, you know, you tweak the formula, it might go up a little bit in their favor or our favor or whatever, so. It's a, a delicate balance in politics, so. That's all I have for tonight, unless you have any questions.
Move to the adjournment. Motion by Mary, second. Second by John, to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We adjourn.